I'll call to order this June 21st, 2022 meeting of the Air Pollution Control District. Madam Clerk, do you mind calling the roll?
Thank you. Board Member Blatts?
Here.
Board Member Edmonds?
Here.
Board Member Huber? Board Member Long?
Here.
Board Member Pollak?
Yeah.
Board Member Ramirez?
Here.
Board Member Rollins?
Here.
Board Member Zaragosa?
Here.
Board Member Huber?
Here.
Chair Laverre.
Here.
And Board Member Parks.
Board Member Parks.
Yes, that's good.
Everyone could please stand and join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agenda review. Mr. Gassemi, are there any changes or revisions to today's agenda? Or any requests from my colleagues to change any of the items?
Chair Laverre, I have received no changes to the agenda.
Okay. Then we can move forward with the agenda as posted. Are there any public comments today?
Chair Laverre, we currently do not have any members of the public sign up to speak. But as a reminder, members of the public who wish to address the board today with live public comments on any agenda item, please visit ventura.org/soob/apcb for participation information and instructions. For in-person public comment, please check in with a deputy clerk. For remote public comment, you will need to be connected via Zoom or telephone. Request to make live public comments on an agenda item will be accepted until the public comment period for each agenda item is complete. If you wish to make comments, you must be in the boardroom, or if you are participating remotely, you must be connected to the meeting via Zoom or telephone prior to the close of the public comment period for that agenda item. And is there any member of the public in the boardroom who would like to make public comment on an item not on the agenda? See you in a minute, Chair Laverre, thank you.
Thank you. Any board member comments this afternoon?
Nope.
Okay, moving right along. Mr. Gassemi, any APCO comments?
Good afternoon, Chair Laverres, members of the board. Ali Gassemi, Air Pollution Control Officer. Last week on June 15th, we finally received 1.7 million on community air pollution funds that we were waiting for. It has been a while before they sent it to us, but we finally got it, so I'm pleased to announce that. At the same time, as before, we are continuing to work with the Ventura County HR staff on filling out the position, filling up the position vacancies that we have at the district. That's all my comment. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Gassemi? Don't see any. Okay, well, let's move on to the regular agenda, and item eight, which is the second public hearing regarding adoption of our budget.
Yes. This is our second public hearing regarding adoption of our budget, our agency budget. I have presentation slides if you would like to go through it, but we have gone through it. If you have any questions, I would like to respond at this point.
And I know we looked at this once prior. Any final questions before we approve this year's budget?
I do want to say thank you for the detail that you put into it. Thank you for that.
Yes, the staff, thank you very much for your comment. We appreciate it.
I'll make the motion to approve the budget.
Excuse me, oh, sorry to interrupt here. Chair Laverre, hi, from Tuscaloosa, Dean with County Council. Just before we entertain a motion, could we just confirm that we don't have any additional public comment via Zoom?
Yes, we should, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any?
Chair Laverre, there are no requests to speak for this item, thank you.
Okay, and I guess I should close the public hearing. And we have a motion from Member Ramirez, and was there a second?
Yes.
Second, Zaragosa.
Oh, great, okay. Madam Clerk.
Board Member Blatts?
Yes.
Board Member Edmonds?
Yes.
Board Member Huber?
Yes.
Board Member Long?
Yes.
Board Member Parks?
Yes.
Board Member Pollak?
Yes.
Board Member Ramirez?
Yes.
Board Member Rollins?
Yes.
Board Member Zaragosa?
Yes.
And Chair Laverre.
Yes. Thank you. And then, next item, number nine.
Number nine, I would like to introduce Mr. Tyler Harris. He is Program Supervisor in Planning Divisions. He will be presenting you with this item.
Good afternoon, Chair Laverre, members of the board. My name is Tyler Harris. I'm a supervising air quality engineer with the district. This is, item requests an increase in the grant amount for two pieces of equipment, which were awarded grants by your board on March 8th of this year. During the final review of the projects, I reduce the grant amount based on the appearance of the existing equipment. But upon receiving additional information from the applicant, determined that the existing equipment is a heavy industrial tractor with operating capabilities greater than what would be expected by the appearance of the equipment if it was a equivalent agricultural tractor. So in order to provide a fair grant amount for the project, we are requesting an increase in the approved grant amount for the two pieces of equipment. We have determined that the replacement equipment is equivalent to the existing equipment, and it should be funded at the full amount requested in order to give a fair grant for this. And it also meets the cost effectiveness requirements of this grant cycle. That's all I have, so if you have any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any questions on this item?
Thank you for the presentation. My question is, I believe both in has a Los Angeles County site also. Will these funds be specific to Ventura County?
They don't, they aren't required to only operate in Ventura County. There's allowance for about 30% operation outside of Ventura County. But we ask, if they are going to move the equipment out, then we ask them to track by hours of operation on the hour meters on the equipment, how much time they spend in the various locations.
So I think in the end, it's nice to be able to, and I know you do it, determine how much will be eliminated from Ventura County's air, I guess, air shed. So this will still apply towards that.
Yes.
Thank you.
If we, we assume that it's all going to be here in our cost effectiveness calculations, unless they tell us in advance that they plan on moving it back and forth. And but if they, you know, as long as they do use it a majority of the time here, we, if we find out that they've moved it to Los Angeles County, or, you know, Salinas, or something like that, then we will initiate the process of requesting repayment of the grant.
So essentially, it is a requirement, then, that it be done at their facilities here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm welcome.
I have a question. Thank you for the presentation. I have a general question.
I have a general question. This is a private company in the county. The program does allow, I know it does allow funding to private companies, farms, et cetera. But do we have any priorities? And I was going to talk to Mr. Gassimi about this for upcoming grants because I see, for example, a lot of our schools in the area, in my district, I'm sure elsewhere, are using antiquated, they're private landscaping companies that do cleanup. And I was at a school last week, and they were using the, you know, gas-powered leaf blowers, which are noisy and very polluting. And I'd like to see how much money do we have left to grant? And if I could get them to apply?
Well, Mr. Ramirez, thank you for the question. We are in luck because we just received a $500,000 grant from the California Air Resources Board specifically for institutional and commercial landscaping equipment to replace it with zero emission. So that program is still under development, and it's not in place yet, but we will be very happy to encourage school districts, city administrations, commercial building operators, and commercial contract landscaping contractors.
When might it be available for application?
The Air Resources Board is still working on the guidelines that will govern this program. So they claim that they will be ready sometime in July. I'm not sure I believe that.
Okay, thank you. Keep us informed.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. I'd like to thank you for doing your due diligence in this. It would be easy to overlook it. And I appreciate your being in detail. I do have a question about electric leaf blowers. I bought an electric leaf blower, and it seems just as noisy as the gas, but of course, it's electric. Is it supposed to be that noisy?
I'm not really sure.
You don't know about electric leaf blowers?
It is a, you know, it's an air-moving piece of equipment, so it does create, generate a lot of noise just doing that. But at least you don't have to breathe the exhaust.
Right, no, I don't. And I like to get up real early, and I don't want to wake the neighbors, so.
Right.
So I don't do my leaf blower. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Harris? Seeing none, all right. We'll entertain a motion on this item?
I so move.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harris. Madam Clerk.
Board Member Blatts?
Yes.
Board Member Edmonds?
Yes.
Board Member Huber?
Yes.
Board Member Long?
Yes.
Board Member Parks?
Yes.
Board Member Pollock?
Yes.
Board Member Ramirez?
Yes.
Board Member Rollins?
Yes.
Board Member Zaragosa?
Yes.
And Chair Laverre.
Yes. All right, thank you, everyone. And then our last item today is number 10, which is a receive and file of our annual comprehensive audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021.
Yes. For the record, Ali Gassimi, Air Pollution Control Officer. This item is a receive and file for the annual comprehensive audit for the agency's fiscal year ended June 30, 2021. The audit was conducted by Eddie Bailey Company. The audit resulted in two separate reports. The first one is annual comprehensive financial report, and the second one was, is the single audit report. The single audit report is required by the federal, it is part of the federal requirement if you get more than $750,000 funding from them. The auditor expressed unmodified opinion, which is the highly, the highest rating that we can get for our annual comprehensive financial report. For the single audit report, it was, they determined that we comply, we were in compliance with all of the federal requirements regarding our financial statements. I, that's my presentation, and I am ready to answer any question you may have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Gassimi on the financial?
Well, it's not a question on the finances. Is there someone in the room that is part of the financial?
Of course. All of this credit is going to go to Ms. Leoni and Nancy.
Well, I wanted to thank you for your excellent work. Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Board Member Parks, and then Board Member Zaragosa.
It seems like there should be some other criteria than the highest you can get is unqualified. We need five stars or something, right?
No, usually, it is very hard to get this kind of opinion, unmodified opinion.
Board Member Zaragosa.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I too like to commend, you know, our staff for excellent, excellent audit. It's really important for all of us to see that transparency, which is really, really important. Thank you again for Ali and staff.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Seeing none? Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we move, do we move?
So we, yeah, move to receive and file this?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Zaragosa.
I believe that was Board Member Zaragosa?
Zaragosa's second.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Blatts?
Yes.
Board Member Edmonds?
Yes.
Board Member Huber?
Yes.
Board Member Long?
Yes.
Board Member Parks?
Yes.
Board Member Pollock?
Yes.
Board Member Ramirez?
Yes.
Board Member Rollins?
Yes.
Board Member Zaragosa?
Yes.
And Chair Laverre.
Yes. Okay, and that concludes our agenda today. Do you know when our next meeting is, Mr. Gassimi?
We are not going to have any meeting in July, and August is dark, so we will be hopefully seeing you guys in September.
Great, okay. Well, I hope everyone enjoys the rest of their summer, and we'll reconvene in September. Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, everyone. Thanks, everyone. Have a great summer.
Very much.
Thanks.